Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
I'd like to call to order the City of Madison Board of Education School Board meeting for April 7, 2022. Full rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. King, roll call, please. Here.
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 Board, if you'll take a moment and review the agenda. I'll need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer, a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Agenda passes. Dr. Nichols, presentations, please.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to invite Dr. Georgina Nelson to come forward with a group of the National Amazing Shake Group.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Nichols, thank you for having us this evening. We are super excited to share a very unique opportunity that you may not know anything about tonight. And it is a wonderful opportunity for our students to call the National Amazing Shake. And about, when I first came to Heritage, we started bringing in-school clubs that we met so that every student could be involved in clubs. And one of the clubs that some of our sponsors really wanted to do was a club called the Amazing Shake. And prior to COVID, we had a group that was going to get to go to national competition, and then, you know, COVID wiped all of that out. And so this year, we were super excited to have that club start back again. And we were super excited about having our first group attend the National Amazing Shake in Atlanta. And I'm not going to steal their thunder, but I will tell you that one of our girls came away with an outstanding award. And our group, and the entire group, we're so proud of them. But I would like to introduce our sponsors, Heather Kell, if you guys want to come on up, and Cara Lawrence. These are our sponsors for Amazing Shake, and they're going to tell you about the competition and about our students and how, what a wonderful job they did. And these ladies took this and ran with it, by the way. They did an awesome job.
Thank you.
So here they are.
You're welcome. Well, first, I want to say thank you to the board for giving us opportunity just to speak and hear our kids and hear this amazing opportunity that they had. And thanks to Dr. Nelson for telling us or asking or letting us go, because I mean, that's a big thing, is like, hey, you have time to meet, and yes, I'll let you go. Here's a hotel room, and go have fun. So that's what we did. And the kids really appreciated it. But my name is Ms. Kell. This is Cara Lawrence, and we are the sponsors. And we met with our students in the morning at 6:30 in the morning.
6:30.
So it was an early morning meeting, and they met, we met for a while, and we taught them how to, basically, social skills, how to shake hands, how to make eye contact, how to just persevere, and how to work under pressure. And that was our main goal. And then we held a small little competition at our school to see what kids could go to the national competition in Atlanta, Georgia. And we had Mayor Finley there to help us, Commissioner Steve Haraway, Renee Bartlett, and many others. We had a math teacher at Liberty. We had a gym at Woody Anderson, at Woody Anderson Ford. We had so many people. And they're the ones that actually chose the students that got to go based on the score they got from their handshake, from their eye contact, and how they handled pressure. Like if they had to do a commercial skit, and at the very end, they had to drink this juice, and it was actually olive juice. Sorry, we're not that mean, but, and how they handled theirself under pressure. So these were the students, the six students that won the competition at Heritage Elementary School. And they're the ones that we took with us. And their names are Summer Lee.
Hi, my name is Summer.
Nice to meet you, Summer.
Keegan Aniker. There's Olivia Goward, Olivia Gowan, sorry.
Hello, my name's Olivia.
Nice to meet you.
Charlotte O'Donnell.
Hi, I'm Charlotte O'Donnell.
Louis Ferrer, nice to meet you.
And Abriella Weaver. There's one that did not come tonight. She could not.
Hi, I'm Abriella.
Nice.
So nice to find you.
I'm so happy you were here.
We are super proud of them. They did amazing. I mean, they had to compete against eighth graders because of competition, competition between fifth and eighth, and we brought the youngest. And they held their own. I mean, they did amazing. Ron Clark, the man who, the Ron Clark Academy is named for, him himself, I mean, he even talked to them about how well they did, and you know, keep it up. I want to see you next year. And that's the problem we have, because they're leaving us, they're going to middle school. But they just did amazing, and we're really proud of them. So, yeah.
So some of the benefits of the Amazing Shake and why we wanted to bring this to Heritage, I have to like think in my brain, you know, how COVID like totally turns on our timelines, I guess like three years ago, but you know, it feels like a year ago, is that we wanted to provide an opportunity for our students to increase their confidence, help them with those soft skills, especially we're seeing that impact that COVID has had on our students with our soft skills. We don't have students looking at each other with their eye to eye. We don't have students who know how to properly greet someone, because we've been greeting people through a computer. So I mean, we've been business at the top, you know, partying on the bottom for like two years. And so we wanted to provide an opportunity for our students to take these skills to middle school and beyond. Not only those soft skills, but communication skills and problem-solving skills. As Ms. Kell mentioned, how to hold your composure, how to deal with upset customers when you are the manager in a movie theater and they're throwing popcorn at you. So many different scenarios that our fifth grade students were having to deal with, that people my age or older might not be able to deal with right now. So just equipping them with those lifelong skills that we know are necessary. So we just want to kind of show you a snapshot of their performance at the Amazing Shake, and then our students are going to speak on their experience, if you don't mind. Thank you so much. And there's no way that she could have stolen whatsoever. So that is just a snippet of what they call the gauntlet, where they were having to go through twenty various scenarios where they had to explain what were non-physical tokens. How do you properly cut a donut in this case, but a steak in others? How to go through the interview panels. They had to be at the White House at a press conference and explain the situation with Ukraine and Russia. So a lot of current events as well as difficult situations. So can I please have Summer, will you speak on your?
The Amazing Shake will be, I, how to do proper etiquette and how to do a proper handshake.
Olivia?
Excuse me, sorry. You guys are doing such a fantastic job. Mr. Payon, can the people hear if they don't speak into the mic?
Okay, girl. So if you don't mind, will you stand in front of the mic and share your experience? Summer, will you go ahead with?
The Amazing Shake had taught me to how to properly introduce myself, how to do proper etiquette, and how to do a proper handshake. Amazing Shake has benefited me by helping me boost my confidence and speak to adults. The Amazing Shake not only didn't teach me about social skills, but also taught me a lot about friendship. Because I met a girl named Caroline from Michigan, and even though we were competing against each other, we still got along. And when we figured out the final winner, no one cried. We all cheered. The Amazing Shake made me more outgoing and encouraged me to talk to people more. The National Amazing Shake has impacted my life so much. It taught me how to think quick on my feet, and it taught me proper etiquette. And it also taught me that it's important to keep up with current events going on in our world.
So as you can see from our students, just this little bit of impact that the Amazing Shake had on our students here. What we would love to see, right now, there are only two elementary schools in our district that participate in the Amazing Shake. And as Dr. Nelson mentioned, you know, part of that impact was due to COVID, but Heritage and Mill Creek participate in the Amazing Shake. We would love to see this opportunity go through our other elementary schools, since our fifth graders can compete. But I know that our girls are itching to get back to that competition, and they would love to speak further to the principals at the middle school about bringing this opportunity to the middle school. Because while, yes, this is a great opportunity for our fifth graders, and they were so outstanding at the competition, we know that they can only get better if this was an opportunity for those students there as well, especially with addressing our current events, addressing those soft skills. And with Madison City, you know, being at the forefront with trying to make sure that our students are global leaders, this is an amazing opportunity that we think could enhance our students at Madison City. So our girls and I, we would love to speak with y'all further about it, and we would also love to find Mr. Penn and Mr. Hill at some point to put a bug in their ear as well. But we really appreciate you guys giving us the gall of our energy for our girls to share their awesomeness. Abriella Weaver actually won the most gracious award while she was at the competition. So they competed against roughly like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixty? Okay, a hundred and sixty students. Our girls were the youngest. They had students all the way to eighth grade. They had students from all across the United States. And not only did Abriella win an award, but our students were repeatedly shouted out during the competition, like, hey, I remember this girl, she's pretty fast. And then, you know, Emma Gudonski, she's not here today, but she was like, it was me, it was me. So our students, you know, just that small snapshot, they were able to show out and show what Madison City Schools are producing. We just want to continue that. Thank you so much.
Well, first of all, thank you to the two amazing sponsors of this group, and I think they deserve a hand for 6:30 in the morning. And obviously, the excitement and encouragement that they have given these young people. And congratulations to each of you. I just want to spend my whole day with each of you. I'm just going to tell you, you're a lot more fun than adults. I'm just going to tell you. And but we're very proud of you and the skills that you have learned. I also want to say thank you to your parents. If you're a parent of one of these tremendous students, please stand up, because we want to say thank you to you. Somebody had to get them there at 6:30. They came dry. You know, it's just a great thing. For years, I had the privilege of serving on several workforce development groups in North Alabama, and I constantly, constantly heard, you know, Dr. Nichols, soft skills, training people how to come and work as a team with people that come from all over the world, and people, how to manage stress, how to work together when you disagree. All of those skills that you have talked about are things that not only you learn to respond to if somebody threw popcorn to you as the manager of the theater, but hopefully, you won't throw the popcorn. That's probably a lesson, too. But I certainly do appreciate each of you and what you have done, and thank you so much. And I'll put a bug in Mr. Hill and Mr. Brown's ear. I'll put a bug in their ear. And I already know that Ms. Lambert's back there, and Dr. Clayton, they're trying to figure out how soon they can move you all to the high school, just have a speed pass, right? Except mom and dad don't want that. I trust you. They'll keep you slowing down a little bit. But thank you and congratulate, let's give these young ladies a hand. I think they've done a fantastic job. Thank you, ladies. Mr. Peck may want a picture. Mr. Peck, he's going to take you outside and get a picture of the group so we can put that on our webpage.
You know, I do have to make a statement as well. Yes. You know, I think about the CEO program that we have at our high school level and several of, you know, my son had the opportunity to participate in that program, and I think your daughter had the opportunity to participate. This is like an early-stage CEO class. I mean, that's outstanding. I'm truly impressed, and I'm kind of so excited. Again, all of the opportunities that Madison City Schools worked to provide you guys, and you guys not only do it, but you do it well. I mean, just excellent job, excellent.
I have a question, too, and probably, I just wanted to know, and forgive me if you had already stated, I didn't hear it. Is this only for females, or just the females beat everybody out?
Actually, a lot of boys signed up. This was kind of brought to us pretty, because of COVID, you know, we had students that were going to go. We had four, it was two boys, two girls, and everybody went. And then COVID happened, and they moved on to middle school.
Okay.
And then the ones that signed up, this year, we had roughly fifteen to twenty.
We had about probably twenty-five applicants, and then we cut it to fifteen, because we said, oh, it's 6:30 a.m. I cannot do twenty-five. So we cut it down, and our fifth grade population this year is very girl-heavy, and so our girls just dominated this year.
But they did. We had boys that were part of the morning, you know, sessions.
Okay.
And they did compete in our little small gauntlet, but these were the ones that scored the highest.
Well, and that's great to know that it's offered to everybody. This is a fantastic program.
And we should have said that. We're not biased. Our girls are just rocking.
Yeah. I figured they'd beat everybody else.
But you know, it's important, my son participated, I think, three years ago. So one of the things that this helps you, and you will learn this in your career, is the hardest part to initiating or communicating with people is breaking, is that initial contact, getting the courage to go and approach somebody and start talking to them and initiate that. And it's a big skill, and it's a really scary way to approach it if you're not used to. So if you can learn that at this stage, it's going to benefit you in your lifetime. Thank you.
Oh, I did forget, I did have one of our parents that we have time, that they wanted to come from their perspective.
Good evening. I'm Megan Gowan. My daughter's Olivia. And I just cannot get over the amount of confidence she has built through this. And these wonderful teachers did such a wonderful job with them. They learned so many new skills through this, social skills, interactions, dealing with different situations. I was so thoroughly impressed. I've noticed that she will approach adults now and carry on a conversation where before she was much more intimidated by that. So I'm really proud of that. And she's also, I've noticed, taken a little more interest in world events as well, because that was part of what they needed to know. So I was really impressed by that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will continue to not break your thing.
That's fine. Good luck following that, Dr. Scripsher, in the future. But, Mr. President, members of the board, I'll ask Ms. Sheila Graves to come forward. She's going to have a presentation on our Month of the Military Child.
Hello. For those of you who I haven't met, I'm Sheila Graves, and I work here as the Federal Grants Administrator. And I'm here to tell you that this month is the Month of the Military Child. So some of us are dressed in purple for that reason. Maybe you saw some of our purple decorations when you came in. And when I first started working with this, I didn't think about what did purple have to do with anything. But after a while, I was thinking, what does military have to do with purple? So I'm going to tell you, purple combines each branch's colors into one. The Air Force, Navy, Coast Guard, and they all use shades of blue. The Army uses green, and the Marines use red, so it becomes purple. So thank you for helping us kick off our events and activities that are going to celebrate this time. So far, I've heard about dress-up days for military kids, spirits days, thank you cards to military kids, family members and their friends, military spotlight interviews are going on, and there are lots of breakfasts and lunches and popcorn parties and ice cream parties, and I've been invited to all of them. So good things. So Thursday, next Thursday is the, is the kind of most important day, the fourteenth, is they call it Purple Up Day. So everybody will be wearing purple in all the schools and really celebrating the kids there. I want Ms. Baragona and Leila Murph to come forward. They're from Discovery. They're here tonight to talk to you. And while they're coming up, I want to tell you a little update. Have you heard about the Purple Star District Program? Well, I've heard that there might be some good news next week, so we'll keep you in the loop on that. Every school has a S2S program, Student to Student Program, which was established to kind of welcome all students, but especially military students. So they do lots of things for easing transitions. And they're at every school, and they are the ones who take the lead in celebrating the whole month in April. So this is Sarah Baragona, one of the sponsors. This is her student, Leila Murph, and she is going to tell you her experience with S2S. But first, she has a little gift for you, and I think you might have something for her.
I do.
Okay. You forgot the basket. She's going back for her basket.
Thank you. We had this because we're proud of you and the service you do at leading leaders in our school. I will share these throughout our building. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Leila Murph, and I am a part of M6's S2S at Discovery Middle School. S2S is a student-led program where current students are paired with new students at DMS. A lot of new students feel uncomfortable or anxious when coming to a new school. Not only are they leaving behind their friends, but their entire way of life. Just like food and water, belonging is a need. Unfortunately, several new students are not afforded this, are not afforded the luxury of belonging. of belonging. This is where we help. S2S shows new students their classes and walks into their classes and, S2S shows new students their classes and walks into them and stays with them after class. We explain unique expectations such as a rotating bell schedule and also host events such as several new student breakfasts, Panther Prowl, a dress-up week, and an end-of-year celebration to let them know that they're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, hang on. Don't leave us yet. Thank you. Y'all are quick. We certainly appreciate you allowing us to share these throughout our building. We appreciate your leadership and all students across our district that lead the school programs of S2S. It's a program we're very proud of because we live in a community where kids serve too, as Casper Weinberger said. Kids serve too. Families serve too. When one of the members of their family serves in the military, the family serves in the military. And as a son of a career military, I'm very proud of the service my father gave in two wars and a career he gave to the military in being a son, and kids and moms and siblings served too. So we appreciate all the work that our schools do. We look forward to next week. We appreciate Senator Butler, who helped pass their legislation for the Purple Star Program in Alabama, which signifies both schools and school districts that support our military families in many ways when they either are overseas or enter their community. And so we look forward to some good news next week that wouldn't happen without faculty and student leadership such as yours that help us to bring students together and make that transition at sometimes a very difficult time in life to have a friend. So thank you so much. Mr. President, members of the board, at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Brian Clayton to come forward. He has a group with him from James Clemens High School. We'll send you the bill for repairs. It's okay.
We got a crew to fix that.
There you go. There you do it.
We do. Mr. President, Board, Dr. Nichols here tonight, very excited to be here tonight to recognize our James Clemens varsity boys' basketball team, which this year in 2021 and 2022 season had many firsts. I think they took some years off my life just watching what great games that we saw. We are, this group is the first to go back-to-back area champions. They're the first group at James Clemens High School to win a regional game. They're the first group at James Clemens High School to win the regional championship, and obviously, the first group to go to the Final Four and then play in the state championship game. And just outstanding season. I'd like to commend here before you all tonight, Coach Frankie Sullivan did an outstanding job preparing his young men to play in the games, but also does an outstanding job along with his staff to develop them as young men. And very proud of them and obviously very proud of Coach Sullivan as well. Just want to thank the, you know, the James Clemens Community, U.S. Board of Education for the support that we experienced during the year, and it was just a great experience all around, you know, playing in that venue and watching our guys perform was just an exciting time to be a James Clemens Jet. And at this time, I'd like to ask Coach Sullivan to come forward and introduce his team.
How you doing? I might turn around and look. Come to the front, please. Normally, I would introduce them, but I think the guys right now, we're trying to build their communication skills. So I would like for them to introduce themselves, and I will speak after they speak.
No pressure after those young ladies. None whatsoever, fellas, none whatsoever.
We have all boys now. Come on, guys.
Good afternoon. I'm Julian Booth, and I played for the varsity boys' basketball team for this year.
My name is Pierce Roper, and I was the starting point guard for the James Clemens Jets basketball
My name is Peter Roper, and I play for James Clemens varsity basketball team.
My name is Nate Jennings, and I play for the James Clemens varsity basketball team.
You had a knee brace on last time I saw you, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought.
My name's Aaron McNair. I played for the James Clemens varsity basketball team.
My name is Kena Walker, and I play for the James Clemens basketball team.
My name is Mesa Remen. I was the basketball manager this year for James Clemens.
Before I get started, I want to thank Dr. Clayton. I thank the board for hiring me in the first place, giving me the opportunity to be here. It's been an awesome ride for me and my family. My family come to every single game. They love it. They enjoy. Like Dr. Clayton said, I give my parents a heart attack as well, so it's been pretty good. And also, Mr. Watts is in the back who supports us, Mr. Rel. The people I talk to, I think the most out of the board, everybody. But Mr. Watts, him, the communication that we have and what he does at Athletic Director goes, I'm talking far beyond in the school. So what he does for every single day and make everything run well for the school is awesome. He's a great guy. I have also the staff members, Coach Hunt back here. Coach Hunt misses everything. He does everything for us, drives the bus, helps with the paperwork, every single thing that you need to get done. And Coach Phillips in the back, back there, Coach Phillips is the guy, he's the muscle man, as you can see on the bench. He keeps the guys together disciplined, and he also does our script and conditioning, does a great job of changing these guys' bodies. The biggest thing that I have for this year, and it sums it up for me, I'm going to try not to, because I hate shedding tears, but I exited me, I have exited all the kids, every senior, every player, no matter who they are, JV always, freshman always to the varsity, right? So Aaron, could you step forward, please? Aaron, I saw him in PE, playing in PE. He was just knocking down shots, knocking down shots, and I said, Sam, why you don't try out for basketball? And he was like, well, Coach, we move so much that I don't think that I'm going to be here long. So I was like, how about this? If you're here this summer, I guarantee you a spot on the team. Like, I will guarantee you a spot on the team. He's like, all right, Coach, I'll let you know. So he called me this summer. I missed his call. I called him back. He missed my call. Coming into the season, he's like, Coach, man, I don't think I can do it. I'm not in shape. I said, just hang around. So at the end of the season, Aaron didn't play many minutes, came to practice on time every day, worked hard every single day, and he told me the biggest thing about our team that he loved the most was we prayed before practice, we prayed after practice, but after every single practice, we say a family. And so it was the first time he ever been a part of a family all year long that he felt good about himself. And when he said that to me, I know that we're doing the right things here at James Clemens and the people that support us, you guys, what you're doing. You're setting the greatest example for these young men, and I'm just trickering down the tree, reaching out to him. So I just want to give him his due right here because he did that for us, and I applaud him and appreciate him for that. And also, my wife is not here. She had to work. But also, my wife, just many nights of me coming home and being frustrated with everything and how I still to this day, I go home and I promise you, I watch that state championship game every day. It's bad. I know it's bad, but I watch it every single day. But what I have learned from that game is, out of all the firsts that we had, every single thing that we had first, we still have one more first to continue with, and these guys are showing it every single day in workout. So I want to thank you guys once again for, and the ladies, for what we have done and what you have done for us, and I hope that the support continues, and we'll continue to be first-class citizens for you guys. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Coach Sullivan, let me just say, first of all, thank you, and thank you to your team. I know some couldn't be here tonight, and we want to thank them for those exciting moments that they gave. When, I think it was the day after we got home from the state championship, I went over to Dr. Clayton, and I said, where's the red trophy? It's not up here in the office. And we had to go down there and get it out of Coach Sullivan's room. He wasn't real, he didn't really want to put it up there. And I told him, I said, Coach, I'm going to tell you something. I've forgotten how many high schools there are. There's thirty-two in 7A high schools in the state of Alabama, and I said, there are thirty of them today that would take that red trophy. Trust me on that. They'd be glad to put it in their trophy case. Right now, it stings, but down the road, it'll remind you of all these young men and the time you had together and all the firsts and exciting moments and heart attacks that we had during the year. And so I just, I'm, thank you so much for your time that you've given and your staff, your coaches. What a great job they all do. And I think the muscle back there is really for you. I think he was the pullback guy. I think that's who it was. Coach Saban got one. He might have been the pullback guy on a couple occasions. But what a great season, and we just appreciate each of you. And we do have a certificate for each of your players and coaches, and I'll give these to you. And we just thank you so much for what you've done this year.
Thank you.
The board. I would just give them a hand. Mr. President, members of the board, at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Travis Scripture to come forward. Dr. Scripture is going to give us a Transportation Department update.
And I get to follow all that wonderful stuff.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Dr. Nichols. All right. Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Nichols, just want to, Transportation would like to provide you with just a few updates from our department. First, always is our, is our mission, that's to provide transportation services to our students in a safe, timely, and courteous manner while supporting the educational mission of Madison City Schools. We are very proud to be the safest option of transportation for all the students that we serve here in Madison City. According to the U.S. Department, next one, next slide, next slide, there we go. According to, that's what I was told to do, okay? I do as I'm told. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation, students are forty-four times more likely to arrive at school alive on the bus than if they ride with their peers or drive themselves. So I won't get into all the specific safety features and specifics, but our number-one job every day is safety. Everything that we do, from the time we pre-trip a bus to the things we do as drivers, to the things that we do to set our motion, set motion in place to inspecting our vehicles, everything we do is safety in mind of the most important resource that we have, which are the children of Madison City. We current, next slide, please. We currently route one hundred and four, current one hundred and four buses with two hundred and two total daily routes with an average day of ridership of close to sixty-two hundred students this year. We also support a multitude of activity runs, field trips, athletic trips. The majority of the school year, MCS transportation transports students six out of the seven days of the week, and some days, seven days of the seven days of the week. So we're on the road all the time with children, supporting those activities, supporting the mission of Madison City Schools. Next one, please. So there's three major updates I wanted to talk to you guys tonight. I want to talk to you about our new entry-level driver, entry-level driver requirements that are required by the Federal Motor Carriers Administration and our new as far as drivers this year. So the short version is, it's harder to become a bus driver now than it's ever been before, and we're shorter on bus drivers than we've been before. Perfect storm, perfect situation. But the new challenge for us, as of February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, all brand-new drivers, okay, that means nobody has a CDL or has carried one before, have to complete coursework in Commercial Driving, Driver Theory, Class B, Passenger Endorsement, and they have to score at least eighty percent on all of those tests as they go through. We also have to document, document that these students or these potential drivers have gone through the coursework that has been approved curriculum-wise by the Federal Motor Carriers of, well, I just refer to them as the Fed, in that way, we want to get in all the, all the acronyms, by the Fed. We keep that on track, and then after that point in time, then our students can start with their road tests, which are, well, not with our road tests, but our roadwork and our range work, and those specific requirements of the Alabama Bus School that they then have to do. So we're talking about hours and hours and hours to become a bus driver, but what the Fed has decided is this training, if we have it all aligned, is that we provide the safest drivers for the children that we have. So what we, what we've done to, next, yeah, what we've done to ensure that we have the safest drivers, first of all, we got ourselves certified as a training center. We're private, so we don't train anyone from the outside. We train our drivers for our kids for Madison City Schools. But we also got into a partnership with Alabama Community College, a system for providing the theory training. And what they've done is they took the curriculum laid out by the Fed, and they've produced these modules, online modules that we bring in, and we let the student work through as we go through, and then they have testing of each one of those. So they become the provider of the, of the theory content. We're the provider of the on-the-road and range content as we go through, still having to score those same, same amount of scores on each one of those, which is eighty percentile. So they certify on our side, we certify on their side, and then we can now send our drivers to school bus school and then go through the road test to get that Class B license. So that's, that's what we're dealing with right now, but we've had, we've had a great start to this so far. We have three that are enrolled in this program, and so we're kind of seeing how, how it goes, but we are working out all the kinks because we have some people that have combination licenses and those types of things coming in, so we're having to kind of work that, that area out. So that's, that's one of the things we're trying to, to, to make happen right now. Next is communication. So this year, we upgraded to Southern Link with our radio systems. And one of the things that we came in and saw with our, our buses and our schools is we had one hundred and fourteen people all on one channel at once every day during dismissals, every day during arrivals, every day on our buses, which calls for less efficiency with finding students, say if we had a bus that was broken down, those types of things, it took tons of time to get there. So what we've, what we've done is, this has allowed schools and drivers to communicate directly with each other without massive traffic compared to the old style. Just like yesterday, we had a bus breakdown from DMS, and the old way it would have done, you would have heard one hundred and fourteen people talking about the individual schools and finally gotten to where the bus was, where it was broken down, sent a mechanic. But we were able to find out the location of the bus because we were on a single channel, talk to the driver, and dispatch somebody to that driver within ninety seconds. They weren't there in ninety seconds, but we knew what we were doing within ninety seconds and had them on the way, got the bus there, got the kids on another bus and had them delivered home without a whole lot of time that's lost. In the old days, it would take us probably ten to fifteen minutes just to find, try and find out what the location is by clearing all the, all the traffic off of that. So it, that's, that's been great for us. Also, our radios now can reach anywhere in the southern United States. So if we send a trip to Mobile, or if we sent, like, if track goes to Mobile for the state championships, we can talk to them on the radios on the bus, just, just as clear as a bell as if they were on the cell phone, whereas our old radio system pretty much wouldn't go much south of the river. So it's increased some of that efficiency and safety. We did have to add a few boosters into a few schools. I don't know if Dr. Nelson is still here, but she was telling me that that helped out tremendously with theirs to put one of those boosters there. So we feel like with our new radio system that we've become more efficient and safer as we go through. The last thing I want to talk about is the Parent Portal Light, which is the GPS on the buses. I know that that had been something in Madison City that you guys had wanted, had talked about with parents and wanted to come out where they could track the buses and see where they are and those types of things. So in October, we had a slow rollout, first with the school administration where they could download the app, see all the buses that they have, where they are in real time and their locations and when they're going to have arrival. And then we rolled it out to all parents by, by November. As a four-six-twenty-two, we had sixty-one hundred users, active users on that app every day. We've gotten great feedback from the site on that, as well as administrative site that I can look at, and through the app, we can get, you know, those things. But the coolest thing to see is when you, one of the things I do is drive around, watching my bus drivers drive, because you want to make sure we're safe doing the things we do. But instead of kids sitting out and waiting at a bus stop if the bus is late or the bus is, those kind of things, literally ninety seconds before the bus gets where it's supposed to go, you see this matriculation of children, just vroom, and they're there, and they all have their phones, and they all see what's going on, or the parents have sent them out. So I think it's, it's really helped track those times and alleviates some of that stress of, of parents knowing when the bus is going to arrive, and sometimes we have to double and triple and those types of things, so they can see where their bus is and exactly when it's going to get there. So really had some, some good things going on in transportation. As you know, we're still working, we're still working through a nationwide shortage on drivers, but as of yet, we've never had to cancel a route in this district as many other districts across the state has done, and that is not our intention any day. We're going to get the kids to school, and we're going to get them home. them home. That's just what we're going to do. All right. Well, I got one other thing. We had a bus breakdown in the morning, and there was a mechanic on site, and he said, a board member stopped and gave me this umbrella, and he said, just give it to Travis when you're finished. And my mechanic looked at him, and he, he said him, and he said, who's Travis? So they all know me as Doc or Dr. Scripture, but I don't know who gave it. He sits, he still doesn't know. Did you give it to him?
Mr. Congressman.
That Travis, all right.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
It was awesome.
You know, I will say something. I don't know if you finished, and I-
I'm finished.
Well, I was going to school, I mean, going to work, and I pulled up behind a bus, and the bus was stop, in a stop position. And of course, you're thinking the kid's about to get out. Right when I pulled up behind the bus, I'm the first car behind the bus, another bus pulled around, pulled in front of that bus, they turned their lights on, and then I tried to figure out what's going on. I could see now that the bus is broke down, and it was raining outside, and these bus drivers got together, told it these kids, because the bus was kind of pulled over in the mud, was toting kids from one bus to the next bus.
These were specials, special needs kids, correct.
And so I tell you, once I realized what was happening, and it was raining, and they took their time to move the kids, the traffic is starting to line up, but the residents of Madison City School, no one tried to go around the bus. The love and patience that you can just see, especially in these trying times, when you're doing the right thing when nobody looking, that's the main thing about this system that's so powerful. God bless you. Excellent job, man. You got an excellent staff. I don't know who the bus drivers were, but just seeing that from a point, they didn't know who I was. I just happened to pull behind the vehicle.
Right.
And when they got out to kind of, after he got the kids all transported, the bus pulled off, and he's putting out his safety cones, it's raining outside, he wasn't fussing and cussing about the bus broke down, he was just doing, handling his business. And I said, hey, man, do you need an umbrella? And he was like, oh, no, I'm okay. And I said, hey, I'm a schoolboy member. I can get the umbrella back. It's okay. You know, so he took the umbrella. That was nothing compared to what I had witnessed, man. It, it made me feel some type of way that I could contribute something to that, what I just witnessed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Congressman. We really, really appreciate it. And Patrick was the mechanic, he's the one she gave it to, and Will Ransom was the driver who was getting those kids out.
Yeah.
And so we have, we have phenomenal folks in transportation. I'm just telling you, any day you want to, you want to come over and just see how we get it done, y'all are welcome to do it. But we have folks that have the biggest heart for the kids and, and for the city that's here. It's, it's amazing what they do every day.
I tell you what, I'm sorry. You know, we've been sitting here for, for several weeks now, it's been a long time, and people have come and said horrible things about this system, and maybe about our leadership, but the wonderful things that go on in this system every single day, every single day, people are working to make this system better behind the scenes. And I just hope that don't go unnoticed during this COVID time and the masking situation, but I'm happy to have a small part in this system.
Thank you. I feel the same way. Any, anything else?
Dr. Scripture, what's our, I assume we're, we're down drivers right now than where you'd like to be?
Yes, sir.
About how many are you down right now?
Ten. Down 10 drivers, one certified mechanic, and one shop assistant.
So I know we've got people watching the meeting online, and, you know, you've got the mic there. So if somebody's interested in becoming a bus driver or mechanic, how do they go about applying?
Call me at 256-929-8232.
Repeat.
We'll put that on the website.
That's it. They can call me, and we'll talk about it. Absolutely. Yep.
Dr. Scripture, what time's the first bus rollout every morning?
First bus rolls out at 6:05. I'll be driving it tomorrow morning.
I know. What time's the last bus roll in on the regular routes?
Regular routes, 4:25.
But some nights, those last buses roll in at what time?
Midnight-ish.
We appreciate all that you do. We certainly appreciate all our drivers and our aides-
Absolutely.
-that help our kids. We transport a lot of miles every day, and you all do a tremendous job. I appreciate the updates you've given us. I know that you've put in a lot of time with your staff to get our GPS system up.
Dr. West did as well.
Yep. Dr. West helped with our system and our new radios that give us that opportunity to communicate in a little clearer way. So I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Dr. Nicholas. Thank you for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Nicholas, you might as well, you've got a little more property to, to-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We did buy a little adjacent property to the, to Dr. Scripture's. We need to add a bay so we can service, folks don't know this, but our staff also services the buses from Alabama A&amp;M. They don't have their own mechanic group, and so we help them by servicing those, and they pay for that service. And they have electric buses. Right now, the cost of an electric bus is much greater than, than the diesel bus, but they're getting closer. And so what we're hoping when we add additional bay on for Dr. Scripture is that we create a bay slash classroom, so that we can expand an auto, diesel, electric program for kids that are interested in that, so that they can learn to do those mechanic kind of areas on our buses, and we can hire a teacher and expand that career tech. So we, we're looking forward to when we can get that done.
Excellent.
Mr. President, that's all of the presentations.
Well, that was a great group of presentations and updates. We'll now move into public comments. If you're a member of the public and you've signed up, you can come forward. We have no public comments, so I'll close public comments, and we will move to action items. And that means back to you, Dr. Nichols.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the consent agenda that it contains the following items. A, minutes 22-08, March 29 of 2022. B, Resolution 2201, a resolution by the City of Madison Board of Education, supporting our Military Families Month and Purple Up for Military Kids. C, early dismissal for James Clemens on May 16, 2022 at 11, since they have a graduation ceremony that afternoon. So that'll allow the staff to leave and be a part of the graduation. D, clinical internship agreements by and between Madison City Board of Education and the Chiropractic and Sports and Urology Specialist PC for James Clemens High School. E, a change order, a number three, for the HVAC upgrade at Heritage Elementary School, the amount of $1,606. F, the awarding of dual enrollment for Principles of Microeconomics on a 6.0 average, having taken that course, and thereafter, the Principles of Micro will wait 4.0. G, 2022, our summer reading programs for our secondary students, and H, our summer reading programs for our elementary reading programs.
Board, Dr. Nichols has recommended the approval of the consent agenda items A through H. Can these be taken as a group?
Can we take out A?
We will remove A, and we'll start with that. Can I have a motion and a second for consent agenda item A?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor of consent agenda item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Board, can I have a motion and a second for consent agenda items B through H?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Mr. Halsey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of board, we have two recommendations coming that are similar. The first one is I recommend for approval of the HVAC renovation bid for Columbia Elementary School from Smith Service Cooperation Corporation, who presented the lowest responsive responsible bid, meeting the specifications for $3,300,000.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an HVAC renovation bid for Columbia Elementary. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Mr. Cummings. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. Jones, Mr. Eccles to do the come and give you an update on the bid, and also the timeline that we're going to look at for, for upgrading these facilities. It's a little different than what we did last summer at Heritage and Horizon. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Board. Dr. Nichols, Mr. Eccles is going to kind of go over the timeline and explain some of the things that we dealt with that, that makes the changes necessary from what we did last summer. And as you may remember, last summer, we had a very, very tight schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And we worked, I think, up until the parents were there for their first, first time to come in and view the, the children's schedules and everything else. And so the way things have happened with COVID and all the other things that are going on, it, it really pretty much makes that impossible without increasing the price extremely high with that. And so we were trying to be good managers of the funds as best as we could as well. And so I'll, I'll yield to Mr. Eccles, and he can give you a little more information.
Sure. I echo that. What we're seeing in the current market right now is, we're seeing at a minimum of 1 and 1/2% per month increase for all materials. The other thing that's impacting a lot of these construction schedules, and this is not just with schools, this is happening across our board with all of our commercial projects and that sort of thing, we're desperately running out of contractors at this phase. So we've had to, with this bid, similar like we had to do with Liberty, is work with the schedule to be able to maintain enough contractors to bid the project where we wouldn't only have one bid or zero bids. So their schedule is also impacting some of, and their workforce. Their workforce is tremendously impacting our pricing right now. The supply chain struggle that we are all experiencing right now is deeply impacting construction market. We have bid through various school systems and commercial jobs just in this past, I was about to say a month, but really in the past two weeks. We have seen lead times jump four weeks within one week. And so it's just an unprecedented time right now that what we're having to deal with. So the timeline, like Dr. Nichols had, had spoken about, we are having to adjust the contract timelines in how they blend into the school years, and then even into the following summer, to be able to allow the contractors the time they need to get the materials in, and then have access to the school where they won't disrupt the classes and that sort of thing. So along those lines, the, the fortunate thing with Columbia and Rainbow both is that we're not changing the duct systems out, we're replacing the equipment that is past their life cycle, their, their anticipated life cycle. So those systems are in closets typically, in their own dedicated closets in the hallway, or they're up on a mezzanine, or in a place that's not going to disrupt the students. So we've made provisions and discussions with the contractors and the contract documents that they can replace those systems through the year, but they'd have to do it over the weekends. And if they're, they would, if they take a system down, it has to be operable that following Monday morning. We've also made provisions, the only, we only see them being able to do two max on a weekend. So we've made provisions for moving cools that we can move into the classrooms, because with any renovation, we're always going to run into something. So if a line ruptures or something happens that was unforeseen, we would have a moving cool in place to keep those classrooms active, to where we're not going to have cooling or heating in those spaces. So.
Mr. President, I know the board remembers that we had two different situations last summer. We had Heritage, which is much like the situation that we're talking about, where we had downstairs units, most of those in some type of closet or area, and upstairs units where we may have had some roof units, whereas in, at Horizon, that was a totally different unit, and we had to tear all of the ductwork out and all of the system out. So the good news is that we will get some of this done across the summer. It saved us on the bid. To get it all done in the summer would have required us to work weekends and have the contractor work weekends, which would have added probably 30% or more to the bid for the time and a half work that we had. Still not, not getting finished maybe on time. This way, we can work this and, and get these updated. I certainly appreciate Mr. Eccles, Mr. Jones, Mr. Terrell, Mr. Gunner, Kevin Gass, working with, with our folks. As you will remember, Board, bulk of about $13 million we've earned, we got from the billion-dollar bond that the state put out, and we dedicated that $13 million to renovating the HVAC at Horizon, at Heritage. Now, we're going to take care of these two schools, and also Liberty and Discovery. We've run out of that $13 million. We'll have to dip into the reserve some to, to make sure, because of, of the cost that has increased since they, since they gave that billion dollars and spread it out. And they base that on enrollment when they put that out across, across the state. But if we hadn't got the billion dollars that the state did with the bond, we wouldn't, we'd be hard pressed to, to look at renovations like these in our HVAC systems. It would have taken us 10 years probably to get done what we will get done in three years. So Johnny, thank you so much. I know you work with us intricately on this, and I appreciate you as well as our team that have helped us to, to put a, a good plan together to upgrade these.
So along the lines of your overtime, it was the contractors for the original summer-only contract date, they had 70% of their labor wages was time and a half or double time. And so spreading that, spreading that out, de-stress the schedule enough to where they were able to come back to their standard labor rates. So.
Well, thank you.
It's tough times right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We're hoping and praying things will calm down soon.
And, and yes, absolutely. As somebody who's even on a capital planning before, before I was on the board, these HVAC systems have, have been on the capital plan list for years and years and years. And, and I still remember when, when, when Mr. Ferrer got on the board, and he said, well, you know, we need to schedule this out, and we need to, I mean, he put on his, he put on his contract negotiation hat, and we need, and I said, we don't have the money to do that. And, and you are correct, we absolutely should. But, but yes, the, the bond by the state has, has allowed us to do much deferred maintenance throughout the district. I appreciate, appreciate you working to stretch those dollars as, as far as we can get in this, in this kind of a market. Thank you. Board?
I'm, I'm just glad that you guys are able to be so flexible and work with everybody and work with the contractor to create a win-win situation that is not only is getting us a, a new system, but is affordable and is, is, and is needed. So thank you.
Johnny, don't go far, because I think we've got some stuff over here Ms. Lambert's got it, Bob Jones, we're going to have to work on. So just, she'll hit you up before you get out the door tonight, okay? All right.
Board, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend approval of the HVAC renovation bid for Rainbow Elementary School from the Comfort Group, who presented the low responsive responsible bid for $3,299,000.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of HVAC renovation bid for Rainbow Elementary. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Mr. Ferrer. Dr. Nichols?
I think Mr. Eccles and Mr. Jones covered. It's going to be the exact same process that we use at Rainbow and, and working through, and we're lucky that the systems are basically set in the same way. That helps us, and so we look forward to getting this accomplished.
Excellent. Further comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval of the February 2022 financial and bank reconciliation statements for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the February 2022 financial and bank reconciliation statements. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Mr. Cummings. Dr. Nichols?
I will ask Ms. Williams to come forward at this time. And we had a finance committee meeting prior to that where she delved into this information, but she'll give an overview of the bank reconciliation and financial statements.
Good afternoon, Board, and Dr. Nichols. Not going to touch this. So for February, we should be at 41.67%. We're currently at that rate for revenues. We're actually up 4%, and we're down in expenditures 11%. We're at 36.45 operating, budgeted operating days. So we're looking really good right now in our financial statements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, any discussion?
No discussion. I'll call. Just that, yeah, as, as indicated, you know, we're in a good position right now with revenues up, expenses down, maintaining within range where we are in our operating days. So good report today. You know, we had discussion about, if you've been following what's going on in Montgomery, the legislature's on the verge of passing the biggest education budget in the state, in the history of the state. There's some good news for our teachers in there with, with increases, and we'll certainly be exploring how that will impact us and how we will go about to implement that as legislation, I assume will be passed very soon. It may have been passed already, I'm not sure, but it was very favorable for all of our school systems, and good news for our teachers, and we'll be looking at how to implement that.
Nothing further. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend approval of the supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools. Can these be taken as a group? If a group found, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Lesman. A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? Any, any abstain? Motion passes, sorry. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval of a list of substitutes for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of a list of substitutes for Madison City Schools. Can these be taken as a group? With the group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Ferrer. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of board, I recommend for your approval of the personnel actions as listed.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the personnel actions you have before you. Can these be taken as a group? With the group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? Why do I keep doing it? Any opposed, any abstain? Motion passes. I, my apologies, Board. Dr. Nichols, any, any that you'd like to recognize?
Got you all tore up tonight.
I, I don't know.
We will get those young girls to come work with you. Do that. Okay. They're going to work with the superintendent too, trust me.
My hand's shaking, I can't get over it.
Mr. President, members of board, I'd like to recognize retirement of Ms. Deborah Weaver. She's finishing up her 25th year of teaching. She's taught fourth grade, sixth grade, and gifted, and for the last three years, she has served as one of our elementary esteemed teachers in the district. In that role, she's taught fourth graders at Mill Creek Heritage, Rainbow, Horizon, and Madison Elementary. She's been very dedicated and a very sweet person, always has a smile on her face, and we hope that her retirement days will be as beneficial and rewarding to her as she has been to the children in this school district. We also, tonight, recognized one person, and we recognized one a few weeks ago on the board agenda, but they're both with us tonight. So I would like to introduce our new volleyball coaches. We have a new volleyball coach that will be at both high schools. And so I'll start with Shelby Grace May. Shelby Grace, can, come, come forward. Shelby Grace is coming to us from being the head volleyball coach at Jackson Preparatory School, where she has coached volleyball, been the strength and conditioning coach. She played volleyball at Mississippi College, and so we're looking forward. She has a bachelor's degree in, in physical education from Mississippi College with a major in kinesiology. And she's originally from Arab, Alabama. And Shelby Grace, we're excited to have you, you at James Clemmons. You, you got, you got the Carolina blue on, you're good to go. You and Dr. Clayton out back there, and Mr. Watts. But would you please, I know you've got some folks waiting tonight, you're more than welcome to introduce them and take a moment to introduce yourself to the board.
Yes. Thank you all so much for this opportunity, and for you, Dr. Nichols and Ms. Terrell, Mr. Watts, Dr. Clayton, I'm super excited to be here and part of this, be a part of this family. I don't know if Mr. Watts, the volleyball team has a muscle man like the basketball team does, but we may need that, not for me, but for my mom. I'm super thankful, those are my mom and dad, they're here with me, they're my biggest fans, and so I'm super thankful for their push and drive for me to come back home, and I'm super excited for this. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, members of board, I also would like to introduce the new volley, head volleyball coach at Bob Jones High School, who is no stranger to our district. We welcome back Jenny Jarrett. Jenny has been at Athens High School and has also coached with United Volleyball Club. She was with us at Bob Jones and from 215 to 219, as they were the state runners-up in 217 and 218. She holds a bachelor's of mathematics from Athens State University, and we are excited to have her back with us in the land of the patriots. And so Jenny, introduce yourself and anyone you'd like to that's with you.
Okay, thank you so much. I am so excited, Dr. Nichols and Board. Of course, like Shelby said, I appreciate Ms. Lambert and Mr. Terrell. My husband is here with me tonight, Brian Jarrett, and my three daughters aren't here, but they are all super excited for us to be back in Madison City. My oldest, Emma, graduated from Bob Jones, so I just feel like I'm coming home. And I'm just excited, and I'm ready to bring my team in here, and since I want a big blue map with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. I want to thank Dr. Clayton, Mr. Watts, Ms. Lambert, Mr. Runyon, Mr. Terrell. They had students and parents, and they took feedback, and they had a good process of interviewing candidates for coaches, and I appreciate them doing their due diligence. And we're very excited about you both being with us, and we look forward to exciting matches, and, and it'll, you know, we'll, we'll take all the blue trophies we can get and red ones too. So we thank you and know that we're here to support you as you, as you help to grow our young ladies, and yeah, we're excited for what will happen with our programs.
Absolutely. Dr. Nichols, we'll stay with you with Superintendent Cummings.
Well, Mr. President, members of board, I have a lot of exciting things. This week, Parkland came out with their ACT report for the state, and I'm proud to say that our district total ACT score was fourth in the state. We're, we're competitive with those folks, we're always competitive with Homewood and Mountain Brook and Vestavia Hills, and very excited about that. Our schools, both Bob Jones and James Clemmons, were in the top 10 of those school composite scores. We also were the number four district in college readiness based upon the ACT, and both of our high schools, again, were in that top 10 of public schools, traditional public schools, and very excited about that. Stacker news came out and did a study of the NITCH report this week and named the top high schools in Alabama, and it's not a surprise that our two schools were represented again in the top 10. James Clemmons was number four and Bob Jones number six, and both with an A+. So I'm very proud, Dr. Clayton, Ms. Lambert, and your staff for, for what you do and the outstanding reputation that both of our schools have for our students. We also had the JC Prom last week. Dr. Clayton, looks like he survived. He danced the night away, and, and we'll have the BJ Prom this Saturday night. Ms. Lambert will have her dancing shoes on over there at Stove House, and so we look forward to that. Also, we have been working on our textbook review. I know that our schools have sent out information about the textbook adoptions, as the board knows, those books are approved by the state, they give us a list, and then our staff, we go through grade levels and teachers and, and folks from the community that look at those, and now they're on display both at the schools in the afternoon, but also we'll have a couple of nights here at the district office. So I appreciate the folks that are working on that. It is, it is play month, Fine Arts Week. Liberty had their Fine Arts Night this week, where all of their Fine Arts groups performed or had art on display. It was truly amazing. Also, Columbia had Frozen Junior last weekend, that was exciting. James Clemmons will have, I think, starting tonight, going through Saturday, Shakespeare's A Midsummer's Night Dream. The students chose that, and I think that says a lot, that they wanted to do a Shakespearean play. As the board knows, we rotate the musical from one high school each year to the other, so it's Bob Jones's year to have the musical. Next week, they will do Mamma Mia. If you didn't get enough of that, Liberty will be doing Peter Pan on the 15th at James Clemmons, and Into the Woods Junior will be Discoveries, but that's May 6th and 7th. So you can just go ahead, and we'll send all these dates to you. And the Madison Elementary is having their STEM Night next Tuesday night. So there's a lot of activities in the next few weeks. Mr. Jones and Mr. Nola have been working on some updated playground designs, which we're going to have a meeting with our PTAs next week to look at those, take a look and see what those look like. I also want to say again, thank you to Dr. Donaldson and our team. We got our Cognia report back. As the board knows, a few weeks ago, we had our district accreditation, and so for folks out there that may not know, having that accreditation allows our students to transfer from one accredited school to another, but also to be accepted by colleges and universities as a standard of their performance and their grades. Cognia has 31 categories that they grade, and 29 of those 31, we receive the highest score that you could get, four out of four, and we received three on the other two categories for a composite score of 378 out of 400, or 95%. That is, that is remarkable, and just as a testament again to the hard work that our staff is doing, I would dare say that that 95% and that 378 may be one of the highest district scores that we will find. And I assure you, Dr. Donaldson and I will find out what the other scores were, and we will want to share that with you. But that's, there's a lot of, a lot of meetings, a lot of work that go into that, and Dr. Donaldson, thank you so much again for leading our team on that, and I just want to give you a hand. That's a tremendous job. We also had a meeting this week with our athletic directors, Mr. Watts back there from our middle and high schools, as they work on the creation of a district-wide athletic handbook. So we're looking forward to working on that, that will help guide our programs, and also though, the development of a coaching training day that we're going to have this summer, so that our coaches will have the opportunity to be updated on legal issues in athletics, as well as having folks come in to talk about leadership. And they're also helping to develop a five-year, what I would call, vision plan for the district. Mr. Terrell is leading our, our folks on that, and I appreciate their work that they are doing as well. And then Alicia Malloy, our choir director at Liberty, was recognized as the valley's top teacher this week, so we applaud her for her work. And then Monday night, Candace Story Lee, a graduate of Bob Jones, who's the athletic director at Vanderbilt University, and her own Jamie Hill are going to be inducted into the Madison County Athletic Hall of Fame. And so we're very proud of their accomplishments and, and the honor that they are bringing both back on themselves, but also to our school district. And so a lot of things going on. I left a few out that I'll get next time or I'll send out, but I certainly appreciate this time of year, it's a lot of work. I will say that I'm very excited about our new education budget of over $8 billion that was passed. Next time, I will kind of give you a breakdown of that, of the different areas that extra money's going to. There is the Numeracy Act, and so the state will begin to look at math coaches and funding those positions. They're going to roll that out in phases and start with schools that are in need academically first, but eventually get to the fact that we will have those positions in the district, which with the new math course of study that's come out will be very beneficial to us and to our team. And then I, I look forward to working through the other areas of the budget that they have passed, and I appreciate the work that our local delegation did. They were very responsive when we would call. There were some bills that concerned us. One bill that concerned superintendents was what was called the choice bill, where $6,200 could be used if someone wanted to go to a charter school or a private school. And the problem with that bill was, that $6,200 is what is allocated per student by the state. That's based upon sales tax across the state. If you calculate that, to, to create that $6,200 per child, per family, be pretty substantial, 1%, one penny for each dollar, you'd have to spend a lot of your own personal money as a family to create your $6,200. Well, that's because it's also generated by people who don't have children. And so if you live in an area such as Madison, where we, in Huntsville, or other urban areas where we have a lot of commerce, then you create more of that money than maybe is created in Choctaw County. But by divvying that money out based upon what the foundation divvies out, you are basically taking a good portion of money that might have been generated in an area such as Madison and Huntsville and distributing it out equally across the state. So as superintendent of Madison, I had a problem with that. I had a problem that they were going to give the money that parents and, and those of us that live here buy and use and distribute it in places that did not and would not have been able to raise that much independent capital. So I appreciate our delegation. We spoke many times about this, and they, they supported our district, and, and I, I think this is probably, as I talked to several superintendents today, this has been one of the most positive pro legislative sessions that, that we've had in many years. And I, and I, and we have great leadership in our delegation up here that carries a great voice, and they have supported us. And so I just would like to thank them for being on the other end of the phone and having the opportunity. I also want to thank you, members of this board, you went, I know Ms. Lesman, I think, went twice, but you all went and you lobbied on the days that were required and went down there and spoke to our delegation. As a board, before the session started, we held a meeting with our delegation to discuss our needs as a school district. And then I know that also we had class and other organizations across the state that say Ms. Lambert or Dr. Clayton belong to, that had days where those folks went and parents went and the PTA across the state, and, and talked to the state legislators about the needs of the school districts in Alabama. So I just want to thank all of those who went down and took the time, who lobbied, who, who spoke to their local delegation. I look forward to breaking out that budget that will be given to us and seeing what and how that impacts our school district as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. We'll start at the far end tonight, Mr. Hulsey.
This week was National Assistant Principal Week, so I want to say thank you to all of our assistant principals at all of our schools. I know Ms. Lambert, Dr. Clayton will say that every week is Assistant Principal Appreciation Week, because I know you, you, you can do your jobs without the great staff you have, and I know you appreciate them, and so do we, and again, at all of our schools, so congratulations to them. This past Sunday, I had the opportunity to go see the presentation of Frozen Junior at Columbia Elementary. They gave me a front row seat for that, and had the best seat in the house, and they were just outstanding. So much talent in, in that whole group. I'm not sure what the ages were, I think they ranged throughout the school, but they were just really talented, really impressed me with how good they were. And so again, tonight, you know, we recognized the James Clemmons basketball team on their outstanding season, we, we recognized the young ladies and the program they're doing to, to work on self-confidence and building confidence, how to communicate, and I think it's just a good representation of the diversity of our school system in terms of all the, the honors we achieve across the spectrum, not just academically, but athletically, the arts and the soft skills that Dr. Nichols alluded to. I think our system does an outstanding job providing those opportunities to our students, and I just want to congratulate everyone, our students who are here tonight and all the achievements that they have earned. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hulsey. Mr. Ferrer?
You know, it's amazing, and Travis stated this, but when you're saying, so I remember having this conversation around this time, two years and a half ago, or maybe three years ago, when we were getting hit by the pandemic and we were so worried, where were we going to be then? I don't know. It took a lot of effort. It started with our teachers showing up to work when most of our nation didn't want to do it. It started with your transportation department, it started with everybody. And after three years later, you got a 95% score, you got an A+ school system. So that tells you the resilience of our teachers, the resilience of our schools, or resilience of our employee, or resilience of our parents, or resilience of our PTA, because everybody came together. We might not all agree on the approach, but we all had the same goal. And now you can say, here's what we have accomplished. A lot of times, you hear a lot of people to tell you, this is what I'm going to do. You just today, show us what we can do. So thank you to our teachers, thank you to our transportation department. So one funny thing about transportation, you know, when we go to, or a lot of our training, I think the best thing that tells you is, the first interaction that every student have during the day is what sets the day. A lot of our students, their first interaction at 6 o'clock in the morning is those, those bus drivers. And if you- those bus drivers. And if you have lived, like I used to live in Toronto, it's at 6:15. And I'm gonna tell you, when you either, we lose one of those drivers, the whole neighborhood is just impacted and they feel so bad. So there, it's so important to understand and it's so important how our employees understand. It doesn't matter if you CMP, making sure that the kids are not hungry in the classroom, that you have, that our kids are getting in school on time so they can be prepared. They can eat, they can be in this classroom. And how everything works and because of, everybody's so conscious of the importance of what they bring to the system. And they never lost or lose focus of what is important and what is, and it's our kids. That's why we saw what you just said today. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferrer. Mr. Cummings?
I will say, I'm glad to have the kids and seeing the kids, students' success back in the boardroom. I know we've had some discussion and I can't wait to get back into schools and seeing the magic happen behind the scenes like we've done in the past. So this is another outstanding night. Thank you all. And thank you for the teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Ms. Lesman?
I too thoroughly enjoyed these presentations. And, you know, along with your comments, Mr. Cummings, on how our transportation team took it upon themselves, made sure our kids were safe. I know from personal experience, my, my kids had a relationship with their bus driver in elementary. And he knew them by name, just even if he saw them at the school. And he'd say, "Roll tide to my son." So he knew stuff about him, not just his name. So again, just, and, and along with James Clemmons' coach, the basketball team, his comments were mostly on, they were more heartfelt in how they came together as a team. Not so much the basketball, but how much he cared for them. So, you know, another demonstration of how, what a great staff we have. I also, the, going back to the, our resolution on the Military Families Month, I actually was in Montgomery Monday and got to see Governor Ivey sign a proclamation declaring April the month of the military child. So that was pretty exciting to go along with April. And then I, and also on Monday, after, right after Montgomery, I got to go to Bob Jones and attend the Mental Health Matters Part II. Again, thank you, Ms. Allen and the PTA. That was huge. And thank you to all who came out. I know the date had been changed because of the weather, but that was just a great event. We heard from a Bob Jones, a prior Bob Jones student who told his story and how it could just happen to anybody. So I got a lot out of that and really appreciated that. So thank you again, again, you know, our wonderful PTA. And welcome, Coach May, and welcome back, Coach Jarrett. I'm glad you got to see all these great presentations tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to say, oh, congratulations to, to Ms. Weaver on her retirement. And, and, and welcome back and welcome to our, to our new volleyball coaches. And I just know you're excited to get started and get in there and make it, make a difference in these, these young students' lives. And we're happy to have you as part of, part of the Madison family. I also want to say, congrats to Ms. Eminem at Liberty for, for, what'd you say that was? The Teacher of the Week, Dr. Nichols?
Yes, a valley teacher.
Valley Teacher of the Week. And I know she pours, pours a lot into students. My youngest absolutely enjoys, enjoys every minute that, that he has in choir there. And, and that's just a, it's just, just another one of our, our examples of a great teacher that, that goes above and beyond with, with her, with her students. You referenced the support that we had from our delegation in Montgomery. And I absolutely want to second that. When we went down, our delegation met with us. They met with us up here. Unfortunately, we have, we have two really strong members that are retiring, Representative Ball and Representative McCutcheon. They've always been just outstanding advocates for the, for the area, but for Madison City Schools in general. And, but, but we, we never have more time when we go down to Montgomery than we get with Representative Moore and with Senator Butler. Senator Butler is such a friend of this district and always has been. And, and, you know, we'll reach out. He texted me earlier this week on, on the, the School Choice Bill and keeping us involved in all of that. And, and I just, I just can't say thank you enough to the support we get from Montgomery and especially our, our local delegation. I also want to say that, that as many of you know, this board is appointed and they serve, they serve five-year terms. And, and Mr. Ferrer has served five years on this board. He's, he has gone above and beyond with his training hours, with his community outreach, with the, the time that he gives. We, we are an uncompensated board. And, and he, he, he just, he works so hard and volunteers so much of his time. And he has put, we have to reapply for the next five-year term if you want to be considered. And, and even though this has been, I would say easily, in the history of this district, the toughest five-year term that anybody's ever had to serve, I'm, I'm very excited and honored that Mr. Ferrer would, would reapply and, and will, will put his hat in the ring. And I can't imagine a better person to serve another five years on this board. And I'm sure that, I'm just absolutely positive that the city council will see it the exact same way. But, but Mr. Ferrer, I just, I want to thank you for just graciously offering to serve another five years. And I appreciate everything you've done. With that, I'd like to announce that we have on the, on the agenda coming up, we have a policy committee meeting on April 18th. And our next scheduled school board meeting is April 26th at 5:00 PM in the boardroom.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to recognize SRO Scott DeFazio with us. I don't want to forget them tonight. They were at the top of my list and I didn't start there. So that was my mistake. I certainly appreciate them and, and all that they do. And our SROs, I heard the chief speak the other day that I was in the, with Ms. Lesman in Leadership Huntsville, and it was Public Safety Today. And we heard all over the north about the challenge finding police officers. And they can't just go into the SRO position. They have to start out as a patrol unit. And then there's training to involve. And so right now, we're hoping to gather a couple more SROs in the future. That means that our folks like these two right here and their other folks are double-dutying and helping us out. And I just want to say thank you for all that you and the other SROs do. And also, we shouted out the assistant principals, and I'll be in trouble if I don't remind us that it was Librarian Appreciation Week. And so don't want to leave our media center folks out. They do a tremendous job in our aides. And so I give a shout-out to the librarians. Don't want to leave anybody out in that group or I don't want to get in trouble, so.
Nothing further. I'll take a motion and a second for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion passes.